Okay. Good evening. We're going to call this public meeting. A public meeting is being called tonight at the request of our interim administrator, Tracy Kellums. Tracy's been an employee of Sycamore Township for nearly 40 years, and he is requesting to formally retire and be rehired as Sycamore Township Administrator. Per Ohio Revised Code 145.381, prior to any employee retiring and then being rehired to the same position, a public meeting is required between 15 and 30 days before reemployment. Tracy Kellums has been a dedicated employee at the township. He was first hired on April 4th, 1983. He served over 16 years as our road superintendent, five years as an assistant administrator, and has been our interim administrator since December of 2021. Tonight, we will take public comments from residents regarding the retire and rehire of Tracy Kellums. Comments will be limited to five minutes. Mr. Miller will keep the time clock. And who do we have on the agenda to speak first?
Put John O'Shea on that list.
Thank you for your time. Usually I'm still at the office this time working myself. When I heard about this situation, you look at it as if I'm a businessman. I hire and fire. I've got to make a payroll every month. He's coming in at the same salary. That's good. There's no previous regimes that have created a gold-plated situation where an existing contract was ripped up and somebody was given a raise just to take a new position. In this case, as a businessman, look at this thing dollar per dollar if this person's coming onboard at the same rate, and that's a good thing for the budget. Number two, if he chooses to take his pension, that's his business, that's his money. I'm taking the Social Security right now because I'm just too mean to retire. And call that double dipping. I don't know. It's my money. I put in all those shares to it. So I think this is a good situation. Plus, you're not going to have any learning curve situations. And as far as I know, nobody in this office wants to just throw you out the door. So this is good. I like this. This is good business, this is good continuity. So I think it's a good move. Thank you.
Jeff, thank you.
Next is Pauline Barthol.
Well, I was over here once this afternoon, but this is my second trip.
Welcome back.
But I would just like to share the feelings that I think he would be a very good administrator. He's been here for 40 years. He's a lot younger than me, but I've never had any dealings where it wasn't pleasant, and the outcome was very good. So I would just like to say I think this is a good thing unless somewhere in our bylaws or somewhere we have something that says he can't do that, I would have no objections to that.
Great.
Thank you.
Pauline, thank you.
Thanks. All right. Our first ride in, Mr. John O'Shea.
I'll echo what the two other people said. The other thing I want to add, though, is having been a member of PERS, we kind of entered into an agreement with the state of Ohio when we joined. I think you joined before I did. But when I joined and when I left, we were told that we were going to have health care for our spouses and ourselves for the rest of our lives. The state of Ohio broke that agreement, and I think that's something that always should be taken into consideration. The other thing is John mentioned the double dipping. It's become a pejorative, which I think is unfair. It's been used as a political cudgel, so to speak, when it's a net wash for the township. Tracy's earned the money. Other people in PERS has earned the money by paying into it. And again, as I said, entering into that contract and fulfilling their end of the bargain when the state of Ohio has not. And therefore, again, he's obviously a great worker, as the other two people have indicated. I think it's something that the township benefits from it by him agreeing to continue working after 40 years. He's earned the benefit of PERS, and therefore, there's absolutely no downside to the township, and he should be able to benefit to the much less extent that he is able to now by taking his PERS payout at this point. Thanks.
Jeff, thank you.
And thanks for indulging me after not following the law.
You're a lawyer. You should know better, too, John.
The worst. The worst.
Nobody else has signed in, but if someone else would like to come to the podium and speak, you may.
I would.
Yes, sir.
I need to learn to follow the rules. Sorry.
We'll put a bigger sign out there for the sign up.
My name's Dennis Lovett. I live over on Plainfield Road, about, what, five houses from Tracy. Odd thing is that I moved in about the time that you actually started working here. So I've known Tracy for 40 years. Great help when the roundabout went in my front yard. I appreciate all the communication that Tracy had with me and my neighbors. It went well. And to have Tracy as administrator, I think, would be a great benefit to the township. I don't really know what else to say except that he's always been very pleasant, very professional in everything that he's done with me and my family. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks.
If there isn't anybody else. Any other takers? No one else, sir?
Okay. With that, we are going to...
Sorry. We also got an email comment a little while ago. You may not have seen.
I did not see it.
Greg Bickford actually sent something in. You might want to take a look or read that in the record. It was just about half an hour ago. Scholar, did you happen to copy?
I didn't get it.
I do have this honorable board of trustees. I had hoped to be there in person tonight to deliver this message, but unfortunately, my schedule has kept me out of town. As you accept comment pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 145.381, I believe it is important to look beyond the statute and look at what is in the best interest of Sycamore Township. You have before you an opportunity to continue the legacy that Sycamore Township enjoys of being a great place to live, work, and play. You will not find another more dedicated public servant than Mr. Kellums. As someone who worked with him for almost 20 years, there is no better ambassador for Sycamore Township. You are in an extremely rare position where you have someone who understands the township from both the administrative side and the day-to-day operation side. Oftentimes, elected officials look too much to the politics of things and fail to look at what opportunities are right in front of them. You have before you a rare opportunity to continue with someone who has proven their loyalty, worth, professionalism, and dedication to Sycamore Township. An outstanding former administrator of yours once said, "Those that have come before us have paved the way that helped us continue being the best place to live, work, and play." You now have an opportunity where those that will come after you can say the same thing of Sycamore Township in 2022. Thank you for your time. Greg Bickford, our former administrator. So that is read into the record as well. If there isn't anybody else that is interested in speaking, we are going to close this meeting, and I believe we open up the... It's 6:45 for a lighting district. So thank you all for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Do we need a motion of adjournment?
Okay. We'll take a motion. We'll make the...
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Your adjournment.
Tracy, was that...
We're going to call our public hearing to order. This is for a lighting district at Richmond Avenue, on Richmond Avenue and Hemseth Drive. Do you want to take this, Rob?
Sure. This is a lighting district that has come up for renewal now. It was started several decades ago, I believe. And then it's up for renewal. Initially started to remind the trustees how a lighting district works. It's initiated by the residents of the neighborhood. It's not the trustees do that. If 51 percent of the property owners in the neighborhood sign a petition, it comes before the trustees. You know, it goes out for a bid, but Duke is the only bidder, the only supplier of lighting in the township. But they give us a cost per lot, per owner. And it's now time to renew this one. It's 10 years and it's time to renew. If you don't renew, the lights get turned off. I wish the Sheriff's Department was here because they are very, they're advocates of the lighting district. Because it provides for safety in the neighborhoods. As I say, it's citizen initiated.
Okay. And so the renewal, all we have to do is just to approve the renewal versus a new district, right?
Right. It's not a new, this is not a new district.
Yes, gotcha.
This is a renewal.
Renewal, okay.
It's usually for 10 years. Comes up, you know, every 10 years. Some of them we've had around since before I was here, over 40 years.
Wow.
But this one I don't think's that old.
Do they have electricity back there?
I don't know, Tracy might know.
Now this involves upgrading to LED also. Is there anything special involved in doing that in terms of?
I think it's already been done.
It's already been changed over.
It's already been changed over. And it's an energy savings.
Yes.
For the LED and maintenance also. I don't think they need to change the lights as often with the LED.
Because the price would have been $1,556 per year with the LED. Now it will be $1,421. So it's going down with $1.40.
Okay. I think Duke is attempting to replace all of them with LED. It is a, is a coming, coming too.
Anybody here to speak to that issue, the lighting district?
We have one person sign up, Mr. Brian Hegg.
That's me.
At 7410 Richmond Avenue.
Yeah, I own the property at 7410 Richmond. As pertaining to the notice, this among, is the first time among any other notices that I found it, you know, rolled up on a rubber band on my front door when I went over there. So that's one thing. I should have received this in the mail. They know my address, both my addresses, because I have two properties in the township. But this is misleading because it says it's $1,421 per lot, per year. But Richmond Avenue, each one of the properties is deeded as lots. My property, which is 60 feet wide, is actually three lots, 20 foot, 20 foot wide lots. Every single one of the lots on Richmond Avenue, because I see in the original plaque from downtown, has a 24 or 20 foot lot allowance. So the lot that's on my property is actually $42.63 and not $14.20. And then the one across the street of me would be $56.84. Okay? For covering three lights on a street that's dark everywhere else. People have porch lights, motion lights, they have ring detectors on their doorbells. And the necessity of the lighting, I think, has gone beyond its need. The original person that signed and petitioned to get that there moved out 25 years ago.
Okay.
They moved back out in the early, early 90s. And they wanted it because they like to walk their dogs at night. And they want to be able to walk down the street and like, you know, so they could walk their dog. And it was the only ones that I knew of that complained or knew anything, you know, worried about it. As you see here tonight, nobody's even interested in talking about it. I'd like to see, put it on the ballot to see if we really need the lights on Richmond. How many other streets are assessed by Sycamore Township to put lighting on? You know, is it, because I've driven around various places around the neighborhood at night and a lot of the streets are dark, there's no streetlights on. Richmond doesn't have sidewalks either because it's too dang long narrow to put sidewalks on both sides. You would have one lane traffic down the middle, that's about it. You know, there's some things you just can't do in Sycamore Township to make it add to the rest of the, you know. We have properties in Kenwood that are worth over a million dollars or more. We have properties out in, what do you call, what do you call that? I forget, the, the other neighborhood, but one of the neighborhoods adopted in the Sycamore Township, they don't have sidewalks, they don't have the same size roads as everybody else, the houses are real small. There's a lot of houses like that in my neighborhood. Nobody has to fit into a niche. And yet that seems like you keep trying to do, put a zoning niche around everybody so that everybody has to, you know, come into a, you know, kind of one big happy family or whatever, you know. Just put it on the ballot, that's all I ask. I don't want to keep paying them. You know, my property taxes have gone up every year for the last probably eight years. Somebody or another has another good reason to charge me more money. They raised the property price of my house. The value of my house went up four times in the last 15 years. And yet I have no plan on selling it, but I'm going to be taxed at that higher rate every time they raise taxes on it. You got to stop spending all these, this money that we don't have. I don't have any more money to dig out, okay? Our government's going to put all sorts of taxes on us and they say, oh no, we won't raise it unless you got $400,000 or more, okay? But they're going to still hit us with a lot of taxes, they're going to send IRS agents out to worm their way into everything we do. And we got to nip it in the bud somewhere, stop overspending for a bunch of stuff we don't need. One of the things I'd like to see is eliminated the home rule law. That was passed by a law that in the very last paragraph, there's a sunset clause they wrote into it, that we could vote it up and down to get rid of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak to the lighting district? Okay, if there are any questions or comments from the board.
I have a question, I guess, Rob, perhaps you know, or Larry. If after a district is renewed, if the residents of the street, the majority of them, or of the district rather, want to undo it, is that possible during the term of the renewal? And what would they do to do that?
Larry, I'm not sure it is. I think once it's renewed, it's on.
Hopefully you have to do it after the end of the contract.
After the end of the contract.
And it's done the same way that it was brought on the resident.
51%.
51% on the petition.
And just to be clear, this was not something that the trustees do. This was initiated as you apparently.
My next one, I can't remember the guy's name, but I could, you know.
Somebody, somebody not, a township employee went door to door and got 51% of the property owners to sign a petition.
Yeah, they were very convincing. They actually, I paid a good deal of money, I was going to expand my driveway and put concrete over it, and I dug it out and put gravel or crushed rock down underneath it. And they decided that they wanted to fill it up with dirt and seed it without even asking. He just didn't, he didn't want me having a wider driveway there than I wanted. I wanted to put the driveway wide in the driveway and repair what was there. And, you know, even like I said, you can rake it up and you can dig gravel out of that spot and it goes down that far. This guy liked to do anything he wanted to do and that was it. So he went around and convinced everybody in the neighborhood. Shoot, he used to walk all the old ladies' dogs that didn't want to walk their dogs.
Well, I didn't, I don't know who it was, but I'm just saying, that's how it would have had to come about, would have been.
Well, you can go back and check the original petition or whatever, it was the guy that circulated the petition. I haven't wanted to decide, I don't like to comment.
And that was certainly your right to not sign it.
Is the cost assessed by auditors parcel?
Yes.
All right, so one solution for you might be just to suggest, sir, if your lot actually spans several parcels, there's a process with the county auditor where you can have those consolidated into one.
Well, right, but that's beyond the point, it takes another several years to do that. But the problem is, is it specifically say on that sheet, hey, if you have three lots, if your lot is 60 foot wide, that's three lots.
Well, let me just suggest, you may want to.
It's just a decision to tell me that I'm only paying $14.
Sure, you may want to contact Dusty Rhodes' office, the county auditor, to see about the process for consolidating lots. It may be much simpler and inexpensive than you think.
Well, I would have to pay to do it for everybody on the street, so I don't.
I think Mr. Miller was pulling up the street here though on the computer, and it looks like most of your neighbors have already done that.
Well, so there's, it's a little confusing.
Yeah, the deeds are made up that way. The original property deed, the ones on my other property on Jet Drive, if you look at the original deed, they drew them all crooked like this. And yet everybody's property line is straight, so everybody's garage, if you put a garage on that property in 1948 when you built the house, that garage sits partially on somebody else's property.
But, for it merely is a suggestion, it may work, you may want to check.
Right, I'm just looking for a solution to lower my taxes somehow. Like I said, I'm, you know, I'm running short to be able to pay my taxes every year.
Okay, anybody else? If not, we will close our public hearing. And we'll take this up at the, in our regular meeting, which will begin at 7:00 PM. Okay, we're going to call our regular meeting to order. If everybody would please rise for the invocation led by Tracy Collins.
Heavenly Father, we praise you and give you thanks for the many blessings you have given us and the people of Sycamore Township. As we begin this meeting, we ask that you send us your Holy Spirit to enlighten and guide us as we discuss the business at hand. Help us follow the example of our Lord Jesus Christ as we make our decisions. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Everybody, please remain seated in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If Mr. Porter would note that all three trustees are present. First item on the agenda is approval of minutes from the September 6 meeting. Do we have a motion?
I move we approve the September 6, 2022 trustee meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion is seconded, further discussion. Mr. Porter.
Mr. James.
Aye.
Ms. Schwagman.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is a proclamation. It is in recognition of Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And I will read this one. Proclamation in recognition of Breast Cancer Awareness Month, whereas October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, which is an annual campaign to increase awareness of this disease, and whereas National Breast Cancer Awareness Month remains dedicated to increasing public knowledge about the importance of early detection of breast cancer, diagnosis and treatment, and whereas the Sycamore Township Board of Trustees supports breast cancer research and wishes to educate the people of Sycamore Township about detection, risk factors and treatment, and whereas the American Cancer Society continues to advise women to get an annual mammogram screening once they reach the age of 40, and whereas this October, the Sycamore Township Board of Trustees recognizes breast cancer survivors, those battling the disease, their families who are a source of love and encouragement, and applaud the efforts of our medical professionals and researchers working hard to find a cure. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the, by the Board of Trustees, Board of Township Trustees of Sycamore Township, State of Ohio, that the month of October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Sycamore Township. Sign this and enter this 20th day of September 2020. I think we need to have a, do we have to have a motion and?
I move we approve, and I mean, I believe you meant 2022.
22, correct. 20th, 20th day of September 2022. We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Motion is seconded, further discussion. Mr. Porter.
Mr. James.
Aye.
Ms. Schwagman.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is proclamation in recognition of National Childhood Cancer Awareness Week. Whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection report cancer is the leading cause of death by disease among U.S. children between infancy and age 15. This tragic disease is detected in nearly 16,000 of our country's children each year, each and every year, and whereas one in five of our nation's children loses his life, loses his or her battle with cancer. Many infants, children and teens will suffer from the long-term effects of cancer and cancer treatment, including secondary cancers. An estimated 400,000 children and adolescents are diagnosed with cancer globally each year. And whereas founded nearly 30 years ago by Stephen Fireston, a member of the philanthropic, philanthropic Max Factor Cosmetics family, the American Cancer Fund for Children, Inc. and Kids Cancer Connection, Inc. are dedicated to helping these children and their families. And whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection provide a variety of vital patients, psychosocial services to children undergoing cancer treatment at nationwide Children's Hospital in Columbus, Cincinnati Children's Hospital, Hospital Medical Center, Dayton Children's Hospital, Shriners Children's Ohio, Children's Ohio in Dayton, as well as participating hospitals throughout the country, thereby enhancing the quality of life for these children and their families. And whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection also sponsored toy distributions, family sailing programs, pet assisted therapy, Laughter Noon, Laughter is Healing, KCC Supercar Experience, positive appearance programs and hospital celebrations in honor of a child's determination and bravery to fight the battle against childhood cancer. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of Township Trustees of Sycamore Township, State of Ohio, that the week of October 9, 2022 to October 15, 2022, is National Child Cancer Awareness Week in Sycamore Township. Sign and enter this 20th day of September 2022. Do we have a motion?
I move we approve the proclamation.
A second.
Motion is seconded, further discussion. Mr. Porter.
Mr. James.
Aye.
Ms. Schwagman.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is public comments. Do we have any?
Yes, sir. First up is Ms. Becky Gannas.
Good evening. My name is Becky Gannas, I live at 4687 Largo Drive. And I'm here to talk about Resolution 1991-45 that I got from the Sycamore Township website, which is a resolution on the harboring of frequent and habitual barking dogs, a minor misdemeanor. I'd like to call your attention to Section 2, which provides that the penalty of a minor misdemeanor is provided in the Ohio Revised Code, Section 955.99. And it's hard to read what's in parentheses, it's either 1 or the letter capital I. 1 doesn't exist, and the I refers to a misdemeanor in the first degree, not a minor misdemeanor. So it would appear that the resolution after 31 years may have not kept up with the Revised Code and perhaps needs to be reviewed. And as you may figure, I didn't just look on the website because I was curious about this resolution. There is a reason I went looking for that, because we are having an issue with habitual barking dogs. I would also like to point out that, you know, the resolution isn't very helpful if it's not enforced, and I have some comments about that too. There's a lot of dogs in our neighborhood, a lot. And 99% of the owners are responsible, they do the right things, we all live together peacefully, but there's always one. And in this case, there are three dogs. Two are the size of ponies and the other is a German shepherd. For most of the summer, I could not use my backyard because I just walk out my back door, and those dogs are just barking incessantly. I can't sit on my patio and read a book, they wake me up at night. And I and many of the neighbors have complained on multiple occasions, more than a half dozen of us have filed written comprehensive complaints that we've provided to the police and crickets. The woman who lives directly behind the dogs, the couple I should say, is a lovely older couple that's approaching their 80s. What they've been through with this barking all the time is just terrible. Mrs. Young has given me permission to talk for her. She is terrified when the dogs are out to go in her backyard. The one dog is so big that it goes up on the four-foot fence, shoulders up, barking, growling, snarling. It's terrifying. I've been there, I've witnessed it. One family on Orchard has moved because of it. So it's a problem. So in conclusion, what I would like to suggest is that it is perhaps time to review this resolution and maybe update it. Looking at resolutions in other townships, Sims Township not only has a provision for a minor misdemeanor, but they provide for a $100 fine. Anderson Township says that each continued day of violation is separate offenses. Anderson Township says that each continued day of violation is separate offenses that they can accumulate if they don't, they're warned and they don't stop the problem. Columbia Township has a very comprehensive rule. It's too long for me to discuss it blank, but I would recommend that perhaps that is one you might want to look at. And some of them also specifically state that the police are to enforce the resolution or ordinance. And honestly, I'm not sure that the police understand that they are the enforcement mechanism for this resolution, and I think that's part of the problem.
Ma'am, I apologize. You're out of time.
Okay. Well, anyway, there you go. That was it.
Thank you. Appreciate it. May I ask, Becky, if you've gathered those resolutions from other townships or have referenced, can you email them to us?
Okay, I can look them up again and send to you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yes, we have a Ms. Anna Haw, excuse me.
Hawdell. Yeah. Hi.
I thought it was Anna Rose.
Well, yeah. My real, I go by my middle name professionally. But hi, I'm Anna Hawdell. I live at 4651 Largo Drive. I'm neighbors with Becky, and I am here to kind of just echo off of the issue we're having. I really feel like it's a serious issue that we have in our neighborhood because it's literally all of our residents currently are being impacted by this. I know I'm not the only person. I've had a very close experience that has made me show up tonight to try to talk to you guys and make things happen. Currently, Sycamore Township has a dog ordinance in place that is designated to protect neighborhoods from what we are currently experiencing. However, every time I have called the police in the last year, each and every officer reminds me that this isn't a law and the dog's barking is not breaking any rules. They continue to brush off my concern. This issue has made me consider moving away as I cannot keep living in a house where my neighbors keep their three extra, extra-large breed dogs out to bark at any day and all hours of the night, like, nonstop. The reason I am here tonight is because the situation at hand has escalated to the point of complete and total chaos. Unfortunately, these owners are impossible to work with. The father, after this last, I worked with Mr. Tarr on this, their dog got out and I called the police on them. The dog looked extremely skinny to me. I did what any normal animal person would do. I have a dog. It didn't look right. Called 911 and the SPCA and let them know what was going on, asked them to come out. The father then proceeded to walk over to my house. I'd never met the man, never seen him. He made multiple verbal threats at myself, my boyfriend. He said he was gonna kill our dogs. He said he was gonna F me and then put me in the ground. The officer that night told me he didn't break any rules and no law was broken tonight. I said, okay, that's fine. Next day, he comes over again. He takes his shirt off in front of my front porch. He flexes his muscles, said a bunch of inappropriate things I'm not gonna say, but you can guess what they were, about round two I am and F-ing me in front of his wife and children. So then I proceeded to file a restraining order on him. That's still in the process as it takes some time. But I guess I'm just asking you tonight to really consider this issue because at this point, it's my own safety and my own house. Yes, I have a boyfriend, but I bought this house to live there by myself and be a strong, independent person and not have to deal with people like this. And it's escalating from a dog, from dogs barking and us asking for them to respect the neighbors. So with that, I feel like I've done all I can do, and I'm just asking you guys to help. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
If I may ask, I know, Mike, I wanted to ask some up here, actually. But Mike, I know we had corresponded after Anna emailed last week when I was heading out of town, and I know you've looked into this and reported to the board about what's going on, but do we have an enforceable resolution currently as to barking dogs?
You do. I watched, I believe it was nine videos of our officers responding, various complaints about these dogs, and only in one of the videos were the dogs actually barking, and that was when our officer went over to the house. He parked his cruiser in the driveway, walked up to the front door, knocked, nothing, walked around the side towards the back. There's a fence across the driveway, the area where the dogs were. Walked up to the fence, the dogs ran up to the fence and barked. He walked back to his car as soon as he turned around and walked away, they stopped barking. I'm not saying they don't bark. I'm not saying it's not a problem, but none of the other times have I heard the dogs barking on those videos. They are out a lot. The owners keep them outside. They've been checked on by the SPCA. They're healthy. They have a safe, and they're well cared for.
And when someone receives threats, as Ms. Hawdell did, a civil protection order, of course, is an option. I know you recommended that to her. If there's a violation of that, the sheriff's office can get involved then, can't they?
Yeah, and I explained that criminal charges were filed that first night.
Okay.
Am I allowed to say something? Well, there's just more, like, I just, am I allowed to say something? Okay. You can go on our next door post and see, like, our whole street experiences. We're not the only two people who are bothered by dogs. So, just like that.
Yeah. Well, maybe we do need to take a look at our resolution and update it to bring it into compliance with what other communities may have, if there's more we can do to protect neighbors from things like this. So maybe Mr. Miller can take a look at this, too.
Yeah, that, I was actually gonna comment on that. That letter in parentheses is actually a lowercase j. It's just a bad font. And that does pertain to, I believe, a fourth degree misdemeanor, and it has to do with either vicious or nuisance dogs. So that's, it's establishing it as a fourth degree misdemeanor.
Of course, with the sheriff's office, if you don't witness what's going on, you can't necessarily do something about it. So if the dogs are quiet when you're there...
Happy to respond anytime, but the dogs need to be barking.
Right. Neighbors might have civil remedies against each other, on the other hand, besides a protective order. If a neighbor is creating a nuisance with barking dogs constantly, you might have a lawsuit you could bring potentially.
Well, you said you had nine videos and only one time they were barking.
I think it was nine off the top of my head.
Where'd those videos come from?
Our body cam.
Okay. So that's nine visits?
I think, I believe so.
What if the neighbors have videos of it just going off for hours? Does that give you room to enforce?
It may, but someone, the neighbor has been, a lot have indicated they don't want to be involved.
They're scared of the people. They're not nice people.
There have been multiple issues where neighbors have indicated that they don't want to be involved in any kind of criminal process. So if that's, and I understand that, but if that's the case, then our officers have to witness it.
Sure. Okay. Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is Sheriff Patrol Report. Mike, you're up.
We've been seeing a slight increase in vehicle break-ins throughout the summer, and then over the weekend, we had one night, five cars were broken into in the Indian Creek neighborhood apartments, and one was stolen. Just in the vast majority of these cases, the cars are all unlocked, whether they're broken into or taken. So we would just encourage people, please lock your vehicles and don't leave any valuables in there.
Okay. Is that it?
Depending on the length of the meeting, I may have to step out. My father-in-law is on the honor flight. He's coming back from DC today.
Oh, awesome.
We're meeting them at the airport.
Well, you should just go.
I've got time.
That's great. That's really great.
Yeah, so he's pretty excited. I've been following pictures all day.
Have you?
Very busy day.
Good.
Awesome.
Congratulations. Okay, next item on the agenda EMS and fire report. Chief.
Yes. Couple things. One of them is the striker contract. This isn't anything for you to approve, but just give you the information that we were able to beat up our vendor on our striker contract, and we're able to save about $5,000 a year on this contract. It's a service contract. The services are cots and our load system, the stair chairs, everything we use to haul patients with. We have to, we have to have inspected once a year, so if any of them fail, the liability's off of us and it's on the people to inspect it. So we're able to go into a contract where they'll come out and inspect them, do the service on them. Any parts or repairs that need to be done will be under the contract and be free of charge to us. So it's a well-worth contract to have, and it's an assurance for us that we're not held liable for any defaults if a cot would happen to drop somebody. So, and then the other thing, the radio system replacement. We have the radio, our alert system that is at our north firehouse is the original system that was put in with, when the station was built, and it's becoming very obsolete. We've had about 20 failures in the system to notify us of runs. We've had mobile comm out six times to look at it, and every time they come out, they can't get it to do it, so it's sporadic, but it happens. And when it happens, none of the, none of the alert system goes off in the station. The bells don't go off, the lights don't come on. We get no audio through the station, and if it wasn't for the guys' pagers or their phones going off, we wouldn't even know we had the run. So when we had mobile comm out to look at it, they basically said the system's trash. We don't have parts for it anymore, and we need to upgrade to what the newer systems are now. Lieutenant Feigner is here tonight because he's more of the radio guru than I am, and if there's any technical questions, he'll be happy to answer those. But the replacement of this system is gonna cost us about $51,000. And that's the update. We need radios, and we need the control board, the locution system, everything that goes along with it to automate that station when a run comes in.
So Tim, can you, you might want to come up here, just so that the camera's on you. So can you tell us a little bit about this? We've missed 20 different calls, is that correct?
Correct. The system is not activated, so we were alerted after the fact on our cell phones via an app that we utilize at times through a third-party vendor. So we'll come back from that incident, the emergency run. We'll ask Hamilton County to drop tones themselves. We'll get the system to activate. We can never get it to duplicate. Mobile comm's been out there also, and we've done the same thing, and we cannot determine if it's relays, if it's the actual informer which receives and decodes the information from Hamilton County. So it's just something that they recommended we go ahead and replace the system itself.
So is Mobile Comm the only player in this arena?
Pretty much. They've been around since 1941 and handled just about every firehouse in this, in the county itself and surrounding counties that I'm aware of, so.
So if that's the case, assuming that's the vendor that you're looking to have replaced, the parts either are outdated or don't work or what have you, does it require a full system replacement, or can you just replace the brain? I mean, do you have to replace the mobile units and the horns and strobes and things like that that aren't going off? Can you just replace the brain?
It's the brains itself. We're gonna continue to utilize the speakers that we have within the firehouse to save money. Any of the strobes and things like that to alert us, the bells, none of that's being replaced. It's basically the main components that activate and do what they do to set all that off within the firehouse.
And how old is this system?
When that firehouse was constructed in '08, I guess. Does that sound about right? '08, '09?
Yep.
So it's 14, 15 years old?
Yeah, and I mean, it activates every time Sycamore Township receives a fire EMS run, both firehouses activate. So anywhere between 4,500 and 5,000 times a year it goes off. Plus, when other units switch, just as they did out there, it'll activate each time. So it could activate up to 40, 50 times a day, honestly.
And so you think you've missed about 20 calls. 20 calls over what period of time? I mean, one call, one call is too many. Let's be clear. One call is too many.
Correct. Since January is...
Since January, okay.
That's when we started, towards December, January is when we started to notice some issues, and it's been continuing. But again, it's just sporadic. We cannot narrow it down to which specific piece it is.
To be clear, the calls were missed on the radio but still picked up on your phone.
Correct. We utilize a third-party vendor for the notification via text, and again, that's third-party, but it saved us a bunch of times.
And so it's $50,000 to replace the brain?
The brain is...
Twenty-four. Twenty-four-nine.
Twenty-four-nine.
So what's the other 15 for?
It's the, it incorporates with the system. It's locution. It's IP-based dispatch, which is much more efficient and faster. So it will utilize that, send the run to us, alert, and then if for some reason that would not operate, what we have there would then be essentially a backup, where we have no backup currently.
And how does, how would this new system interface with the system that we have in the south station?
The south station was upgraded in '16. So there are some things that have changed over time, but in the future, we would hope to ask to put the locution in and move to an IP base down here also. But it would just be easier and more cost-effective to combine everything up there in one project and do it at one time at station.
The IP base, before they went to that, we were doing data transfer, data link. So it was basically a radio that was in the station, and the county could transmit the call through a data link, and it would come through the radio and automate to the, into the station. And back in '16, they changed their system from the data link to the IP, which is now all web. It's all web-based. It's all computer-based. So in '16, when we upgraded the other station, the station down here, we changed everything to that IP, right? We went to IP down here?
No, we are not IP yet down here.
So we're just converting it?
IP recently came out over the last three to four years when the county continued to make changes, and we didn't necessarily see a need to do it at the time, but we would like to make that effort to upgrade the system to a more, I guess, reliable and, you know...
So do we still have the radio backup? I mean, if you go to an IP system and...
Correct.
And you lose, and fuse goes down, or spectrum goes out, or wherever we're getting that service, do we still have?
Correct. They're upgrading the brains of it, but we want to incorporate that also. So the locution IP would work. If for some reason the IP would not work, the internet was down, what they're, we're looking to replace the system with the new brains would then activate and alert us.
Okay.
The IP-based system isn't dependent on any particular carrier, though, right? Any internet connection through any source of...
No, it's correct. Whatever internet service we have here in the township, it just works through that. It's basically a program that operates within the brain box there that they put in there that'll receive the alerts from Hamilton County.
So let's say that they, let's say we have a reoccurrence of the tornado we had a while back, and our system's out for two weeks, internet service, let's just say. So is it, you're saying this backup will...
Correct.
...allow us to continue to...
That is correct.
And how do you get the signal? You're not getting it over the internet now, so you're, how are you getting that signal? Is that radio?
Correct. There's antennas on top of both the firehouses itself, so Hamilton County then sends that information, and it goes into currently what's an informer, which you're not able to get repaired or replace right now. So that's part of our issue with looking at that. But then it's decoded essentially, and then comes through that, clicks relays, does its whole big thing that it does. I don't know all the specifics, but then that's what trips the bells, the speakers, and everything else to alert us of a run.
And none of this is cellular network dependent, is it?
No.
Okay.
No, it's not.
Couple more questions. I number one, I assume this is, since it started in January, this is not something that's part of the existing budget, the 2022 budget. This is a, this is a request outside of budget, correct?
Right.
And I know, I just went through purchasing some technology items like this, and there were, imagine, you know, imagine that shocking, you know, supply chain issues. Can you get this? I mean, this is what you want, but can you get it in a timely fashion?
Yes, we met with Mobile Comm and what components that they're looking to build this system with. Basically, this is a, it's not something you buy off the shelf. They're going to build it for us, and everything that we are going to utilize is readily available, whereas some of the things we currently have in that old system, they're supply chain issues or they're discontinued parts.
One thing to keep in mind, though, is that unless this is a single-source vendor or a state bid, if it's over $50,000, you may have to go bid it out.
Well, it's not, not over 50. And there's two different vendors here, and one of them, the one is under 50, and the other one's way under 50. The total, the total package is 51, then.
Motorola and Mobile Comm.
So it's, so the one, the locution radio system is the 40,000, and then the radios that we have to buy, they're worth like 11,000. That's under Mobile Comm.
I thought we were using the existing radios and the existing horns, strobes, and bells. We're buying new radios also?
There's two radios that's necessary for the system that need to be replaced, and that's through Motorola themselves, which is on state bid. And then Mobile Comm builds the brain box and then would supply the locution program.
So if the electricity also goes out, we have a generator at that facility.
Yes, sir.
So, that would run everything we need to get that signals in.
And that's why I brought Tim, because I wouldn't have been able to answer all of that.
So, this is a, let's say.
Delegation.
For discussion purposes, this is about a 13-year-old system. I mean, do we, what kind of warranties do we get from, on the equipment itself? But how long will this, we don't want this thing to be outdated in three years or you're ready to go back and say we need something new because we got the bigger and better.
And it doesn't. It's, again, each one of these systems are, are customized. They're not pulled off a shelf. They are built. So, that system that was built up north was built with specific relays and timers and everything else. And it's, this new system will be different the way that the individuals that build these systems, that Mobile Comm will build it. So, it's similar to 16 here. It's not necessarily out of date, needing replaced. There's just upgrades that we could potentially make in the future to make the system more reliable and more better.
You're saying that this is a modular system and we can take a modular and replace it with something that's more new and improved?
Yes.
Okay.
And these radios are compatible with other units in the area, I assume? So, if you want to join run with Blue Ash or?
Yeah, they're, they're within the firehouse and that's what also will be in part of sending the voice through the speakers, should the IP system not operate. And then there's a city band radio that if the chief's out and he picks up his radio in his car and calls, we hear it within the firehouse. We can then grab that radio and respond to the chief.
Great. Any other questions? So, what do you need from us right now, Chief?
I was just informing you, Tracy's got the POs.
Give us a resolution for the approval, but I just wanted to kind of give you an idea what's, what it's all about.
Okay.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anything, anything else, Chief?
That's all.
Okay. Any questions, further questions? Roads Maintenance and Recreation Report.
Good evening. So, if you remember, we had the big Cooper Creek Tree giveaway, which was a big success. We got a lot of feedback from Hamilton County. Very appreciative so much that they have sent an email that Jason Petty is being awarded as Cooperator of the Year Award.
Wow.
And there's a, so, in association with the Cooper Creek Tree giveaway, the tree sale, volunteer days, educational programs, said that his partnership has really been greatly appreciated. They're gonna receive a formal letter. And I believe there is a, they're wanting him to come to receive that award.
That's very nice.
That's great. Very awesome.
Yeah, very good. Also, last week, well, continuing with parks, as you know, we had our last concert the other night. Decent crowd, beautiful weather, music was good. And this coming Saturday is a movie up at McDaniel. So, that will be our last movie of the year also. So, also, we had, last week, we had the Snowplow Rodeo that we participate in every year with all the townships from Hamilton County. Once again, our drivers did quite well. Mark Homan took third place overall, the county for drivers. And Mark Saylor took first and Brian Winal took second in the skid steer competition. So, we were well represented. So, as you know, we, we've been having a lot of success with grants lately. So, we've got some more good news. We were very, we were successful. And this would be interesting to the fire department. We put in for preemption grant for preemptions for the signals. And we were awarded that.
Good.
And, uh, this is small print, so I had to put my glasses on. I can't read it. So, that, this, that's a $658,000 grant. So, that's 80%. And that will be every signal in the township.
Everyone. That's great.
And that would be wonderful, because we run into some issues with some of the intersections with the traffic.
Figured you guys would be happy to hear that. This just came out.
That's great news.
And on this saying, this is the Ohio STBG grant. So, along with that saying, this isn't our grant, but we are involved in it. Hamilton County did receive a grant for the Fields Road intersection project that we've been talking about.
Awesome.
So, uh, it seems like that's actually gonna come to fruition.
Is that an 80? Hmm? Is that an 80%?
That is an 80%. That's 6.1 million.
Beautiful.
Also, with the Ohio TA grant, Transportation Alternatives, we were the number one rated project for the Solzman and School Road Sidewalk Project. So, as you know, we were awarded Kepa Road this past year.
Right.
You know, we're in engineering with that right now. And this is to connect up with that and hit Solzman all the way to school and school all the way down to the township lab, share and build to collect the school.
Perfect.
So, uh, we're, that's a $647,000 grant and that is a 50% grant on that one. So, more work. We're always looking for work.
That's awesome. Those are all good news.
Yeah, very good news. So, that's really all I have tonight for, for maintenance.
Okay. Any questions?
So, is some of Steve Brule's chauffeurs behind the scenes, Grant Magic going on here?
It is.
Pass on our thanks to.
Yeah, along with some, uh, some engineers that we utilize and worked with this choice one, did one of them and TEC did the preemption. So.
Great.
It's very good. It's great to hear.
Great news.
We were surprised that we got them both. Quite happy.
Good job, Tracy. Any other questions? Planning and zoning report. Scarlet?
Uh, I'll be brief tonight. We don't have any public nuisance or anything to talk about tonight, no resolutions. Uh, the zone, excuse me, the zoning commission heard case number 2022-11 MA last week. It was a continuation of the August public hearing. That was, uh, that was denied. I believe I, I may have reported on that already. Um, but that was denied 3O, um, uh, by the commission. That is a advisory decision, so that'll be coming in front of the board of trustees. Uh, we've tentatively set that public hearing for 6:00 PM on October 4th, uh, for your review. Uh, and I actually didn't give the name of the applicant. That is the Landmark Recovery, uh, project on, on East Galworth Road. So, uh, other than that, we, uh, we canceled our board zoning appeals meeting this week due to lack of agenda. And our next meeting will be October 11th for Zoning Commission. We have one case that night. That is the New Campus, which is a, um, um, like a, like a youth daycare type center that's affiliated with Kids First up there at, actually up on Solzman Road. So.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Any questions? Okay. Law Director Report. Larry?
I have no report or nothing to report.
Okay. Nothing from the ship?
No. Good food.
There you go. Administrator Report. Mr. Callums?
So, I have several resolutions for you tonight. We'll start off with the ones for the lighting districts that we heard on the public hearing before this meeting. So, I have a resolution amending and replacing in its entirety Resolution 2021-78, renewing and upgrading to LED lights the Richmond Avenue Lighting District and dispensing with a second reading.
I move. We approve the resolution as presented.
A second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Mr. Porter?
Mr. James?
Aye.
Ms. Schwegman?
Aye.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Okay, the second one, I have a resolution amending and replacing in its entirety Resolution 2021-79, renewing and upgrading to LED lights the HemSeth Drive Lighting District and dispensing with a second reading.
I move. We approve the resolution as presented.
A second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Mr. Porter?
Mr. James?
Aye.
Ms. Schwegman?
Aye.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Okay, and the next resolution is, uh, something that's been in the news. It's come around. Townships are, administrators are making a push for this. I know the prosecutor is also. This has to do with public safety when setting bail. So, this is a resolution in support of State Issue One, to require courts to consider factors like public safety when setting the amount of bail.
I will move to approve the resolution as presented.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion?
I, I do have a few questions and a few things to say about this. So, how did this particular resolution come to our attention?
So, this came through another administrator, administrators of the different townships that have been approached by prosecutor and state legislators to support this.
Okay. I, I'll just, I'm in favor of this issue, of course. And I, I'm just a little concerned by passing a resolution such as this, frankly, because this is somewhat of a political thing since it is coming up on the ballot. I think it's a good thing. I think citizens should support it, residents of the township should support it. And I plan to vote in favor of this tonight, I suppose. But I'd consider it abstaining, even though I'm in favor of it, because I just worry that this could be the start of all sorts of political things we might be either under our own initiative passing or then asked to pass by members of the community on all kinds of topics that other communities delve into when it's really out of bounds for what they need to be doing anyway. Um, the bail issue affects the entire county, the entire state, certainly. So, I, I do think it's important. I just think we should also shy away from passing resolutions advocating particular positions in the future. And I'd ask the board to be mindful of that. So, that's, that's my comment as to this.
And I, I agree with you. I thought about that, but I thought that this was so important. This is something that affects the whole state. I just thought it was important enough to bring to you, because this is not something that we would usually do.
Yeah.
When something's coming up on the ballot.
Okay. We have a motion. Second, any further discussion? Mr. Porter?
I didn't know that we had a second, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Did you think we did?
I second. Yeah, I second. I think, I think.
Okay.
There were just several just talking at the same time. It's okay.
Mr. Porter?
Um, Mr. James?
Aye.
Ms. Schwegman?
Aye.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
And the last resolution I have is got to do with the radio system that the chief just talked about, because the Motorola part of it is on state bid. So, this is a resolution approving that. So, I have a resolution approving contract with Motorola Solutions per state bid and dispensing with a second reading.
I move. We approve the resolution as presented.
A second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion?
Uh, one, one question. These are, is this coming out of TIF?
This is coming out of.
Sorry, I second.
Mr. James?
Aye.
Ms. Schwegman?
Aye.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Okay, the only other thing I have tonight is a purchase order list. So, I have PO number 22-165-11 for World Fuel Services and $5,000 for fuel for the Sheriff's Department. And this is coming out of their budget. 22-165-12, World Fuel Services for $10,000 for fuel for the fire department. This is also coming out of their budget. 22-280, Baston and Company LLC, this is for the township audit of 2020, 2021, for $10,710. This comes out of general fund. 22-282 for Mobile Comm Inc., this is $40,913.58 for Station 93 dispatch system and upgrade. That is coming out of TIF. And 22-283 for Motorola Solutions for $11,099.77 for Station 93 mobile radios and hardware. That is also coming out of TIF.
I move. We approve the purchase order list as presented by Mr. Callums.
A second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Mr. Porter?
Mr. James?
Aye.
Ms. Schwegman?
Aye.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is fiscal officer report.
Yes, we had cash receipts of $414,138.56. Disbursements of $545,440.29. A complete listing of the, uh, receipts and disbursements is available in the packet for your review.
We have a motion to approve.
I move. We approve.
A second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Mr. Porter?
Mr. James?
Aye.
Ms. Schwegman?
Aye.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda, trustee comments.
Um, a couple of them. Um, I want to thank Mr. Callums and his staff for continuing to leverage our budget through the diligent pursuit of available grants out there. It makes a big difference. So, thanks to you and your team for continuing to look for available funds to help augment taxpayer dollars. Um, and I'd also like to congratulate Mr. Porter and Ms. Debbie Campbell for another year of clean audits. So, congratulations. I think there, I think you've had many in a row. Um, but thanks to Mr. Porter and Debbie Campbell in the, in the office for keeping our finances straight for yet another year. That's it.
Cameras? Yes. I feel like I'm always adding to what you said. So, let me add what you said. First of all, I, I agree with all of that. And if you want to amplify that, I also like to congratulate and thank all of our staff in the township and all the elected officials for the award certificate we got from the state auditor for the highest achievement in open and transparent government. Open and transparent government is good government and there is a system of up to a four-star ranking for that. We got the four stars, the highest award for it. There are actually seven things the state looks for, um, different criteria they look for. If you meet five of them, you get four stars. But we met all seven of their requirements. So, this is a, a good thing. Again, transparent government is great. We've got a great staff here who responds to records requests when they get them and makes sure that we have things published on our website, in our newsletter and other places, so that when people want information, they get the information and the documents they're entitled to. So, thanks to the staff for this. Rob, thanks for overseeing all of this. Thanks to everyone else for participating in this, too. Um, this is a great thing. This covers calendar year 2021 for this particular one. So, great thing. Hope we get this every year with the four stars. That's what I've got. So, thank you.
Okay.
That was a tough year, too, with the COVID and all the COVID money and X stuff coming.
I'll just echo the congratulations to you, Rob, for the great job you and Debbie do in the, in the office, uh, and the, again, another clean audit. Want to congratulate Jason for being, uh, receiving the award and.
Cooperator of the year.
Cooperator.
That's pretty good. That's pretty good. Um, and other than that, I don't have anything else. We do have the movie in the park, uh, our last movie of the year. It is Alvin and the Chipmunks, The Road Chip. So, uh, it, it's gonna go out, it's gonna start at dusk on Saturday in, in McDaniel Park. And other than that, I don't have anything else. So, if we have no other business, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
I move. We adjourn.
A second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.